Good afternoon. I'll give them a few moments in the back. All right, I show 1:32 on our council chambers control screen, so I'm going to go ahead and get started. It is May the 23rd. And it is our privilege to gather here today. Before we get started, we will enter an executive session. Our intent is to come promptly back out and begin the regularly scheduled meeting at 2:00 P.M. But at this time, we will go into executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. With that, we will be in recess, and we will be promptly out to begin at 2:00 P.M. Good afternoon, welcome back. We are back from executive session. It is 2:00 on May the 23rd. And at this time today, we have Pastor Justin Steyes with us from the Co-op Church. If everybody will please stand and remain standing, Pastor Steyes will lead us in our invocation, and then we will move immediately to our pledges.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this city, and we thank you for just the growth and development that we're seeing all over Lubbock. God, we, as people that are in the city and for the city, God, we're excited about the movement that you're taking, what we're seeing take place. God, I thank you for the leadership of our city. I thank you for how they are stewarding the city's. I praise continual discernment and wisdom over them as they lead our city. And so, God, we just pray that Lubbock would be a flourishing land. God, we pray that Lubbock would be looked at not only for areas of growth and development with companies and businesses, but also growth and development and flourishing of humans. And so, God, we thank you for all the opportunities that are happening and going on in the city, and I just thank you for what you're doing. And so, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you so very much. If you would join us as we offer the pledge to the United States and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, you may all be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Thank you, Pastor Steyes. Appreciate you being here today. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 3. This is citizen comments. According to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person for a meeting of the city council regarding any matter posted shall complete a sign-up form no later than 2:00 P.M. It will provide an opportunity for citizens to make comments and express a position on an agenda item. If you recall, if you make a citizen comment, you will have three minutes. If your name is called, you can step forward to the podium, state your name, your address, the item or items you're speaking about. When you get to two and a half minutes, Jimmy will give you a nice little bell ring, and then you'll have 30 more seconds to complete your comment. Ms. Michael Ward.
Michael Ward, 5417 Eighth Street, Lubbock, Texas. I need about three minutes on each of the items I signed up for, but I'll start with the ones that are on the consent agenda, which means that you won't even comment on it unless there's somebody pull it to talk about. But there's several items on there handing out more money downtown. And then the two more big projects of LITA incentives, land, all sorts of cash incentives, and all sorts of things. But that's several of the items. The part of them are market Lubbock, which is property tax supported. And as most of you know, we voted the property tax part out 31 years ago, plus completely out of the charter, but it's never stopped. So even downtown, with all of these business incentives, I looked at the TIF money from last year, and it was down a million and a half from 2022. And I know there's a lot of factors that go into that, but we've spent millions and millions of dollars on downtown businesses, facade improvement to 50% and 10% interior. But the idea of expanding that into empowerment zones of North University and 34th, and we were 34th Street merchants for many years. But this is a huge thing, and every bit of this, including the abatements that have already been done, and that's one of the other items on X Fab, unless it's five years descending instead of 100% for 10 years like you've been doing. But downtown has not necessarily changed that much because of it. But to open these up, I don't know where you're going to shift enough taxpayer money to do these. I'm sorry, there's a lot of people on both of them. And granted, they need some help, but every time you do an incentive or even these abatements, it's shifting the taxpayer part of this on all the rest of us. And a lot of us don't have a way to do our recoup all of the inflation that we're facing. And a lot of people are really struggling. You may not realize it, but every bit of this sounds just lovely, but no society's ever taxed itself into prosperity, and I don't think we're going to be much different. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. We will next move to Agenda Item 4. 4 is, and 4.1 is our April 25th of 2023 regular city council meeting. I'd entertain a motion to approve 4.1. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Minutes under 4.1 carries 7-0. We will next move to our consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.40. I think we pulled back in 5.34, so that will be on the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.4. Would entertain a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.40. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All in favor of approval of 5.1 through 5.40, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0. Next, we will move to the regular agenda. 6.1, 6.2, 3, and 4 are all public hearings. So we will take these individually. Begin with 6.1. Go ahead and take some remarks from Ms. Sager. Maybe, Ms. Sager, you could give us remarks on all of these, and then I can open up the public hearings on those, and then we can take them as an individual vote. All right, I'll turn it over to you.
Item 6.1 is a zone change request from 2 Family District R2 to Family Apartment District A1. We sent out 30 notifications, receiving two in opposition. One, we considered neutral. The comment was they weren't sure whether or not they were in favor and opposition. We reached out to that individual, and her main concern was that this would raise property tax in her neighborhood. This property is located south of 19th, west of Avenue U. Here is the response map showing the two opposed and the one neutral. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. You can see the property is located within a residential neighborhood. The current zoning is 2 Family District R2, and it is surrounded by R2. Feature land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area, with a better photo of the subject property here. You can see there are three separate structures on the property today. Here are some records from the Building Safety Department. We tried to do as much research as we could to determine the history of this property and how it came to have three separate structures. The structure directly behind the main home was originally constructed as a garage and storage building. It was converted to a servants' quarters in December of 1945. Additional records show all three structures were being used as dwellings in June of 1982. There was a permit for a gas service for units A, B, and C. If the two structures behind the main home were converted to dwellings before November 20th of 1980, the owner was required to register them by May 1st of 1981. We have no record of registration for these units. If they were constructed as or converted to dwellings before November 20th, since the property owner failed to register them, they are in violation and not legally permitted to be used as dwellings. If they were constructed or converted to dwellings after November 20th, 1980, then it was done illegally. The future land use map designates this area for low-density residential land uses. The proposed zone change is not compatible with this designation. The request is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance, is not compatible with the surrounding area. The property is located south of 21st, east of Avenue V, both of which are designated as local streets. Staff recommended denial of this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to take any questions.
Ms. Sager, looking at 6.1, was the, have they been acting in the capacity basically as A1 this entire time? What's the history?
Based on the gas permit from June of 1982, I would expect all three structures have been used as dwellings since then.
So they've been acting in the same capacity, they just weren't in.
Correct. Just not done legally.
Besides the one complaint on property taxes, there's no substantial changes to these structures you anticipate? They're just trying to get into conforming use?
That's correct.
Is that what you're?
Yes.
Is that was the reason why P&amp;Z ultimately decided to pass this 7-0? Because they've been operating this way for 50, 40 years?
Correct. And they felt like the June 1982 date was so close to the November 1980, May 1981. We don't know for sure when they were converted to dwellings, that they felt like it was appropriate to allow them to continue, since they've been operating since then.
Were there any complaints of their use, or that they weren't? They were out of code, or doing anything improper, or illicit, or anything illegal, or is it just?
None of those complaints. The two that responded in opposition did not provide any comments, and no one spoke in opposition at the meeting.
Okay, that's all I have. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
We do have somebody here to speak on behalf of that. Is that right?
The applicant should be here, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I think my only thing is that it is not compatible with the surrounding areas, so I'm iffy. But once we do the public hearing, I'll be more decisive.
Any other questions on 6.1 from Ms. Sager? Mr. McBrayer?
So this permit, plumbing permit in 82?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's no, is there any problem with getting a plumbing permit for a building that's non-conforming? I mean, that's, those are two totally separate issues, right?
Yes, to a degree. I mean, my department, the planning department, does not review just typical electrical plumbing permits. We're going to look at new construction, addition, and expansions. So my department likely did not review this permit.
Okay.
Any other questions of Ms. Sager on 6.1? All right, Ms. Sager, I believe since we may have some questions, I'm going to go ahead and take this one separately. Without any objection, we'll take this as a 6.1 individually. So at this time, I will open up a public hearing for Agenda Item 6.1. If anyone here is wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 6.1, you may approach. If you approach the microphone, please remember to state your name and your address. Any of those who are wishing to speak in opposition to 6.1, you may approach now. All right, seeing none. If anyone here is present wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.1, you may approach now. All right, we'll now close the public hearing.
I'm here if you have any questions, but if you need me to speak, I can. I'm here representing the case.
This is public hearing, this is your opportunity. There will be no questions.
I'll give you some info then, real quick. I think one of your questions was, so we manage this property for a client of mine.
You'll go ahead and state your name and address.
Travis Turner, 9810 Vanita Avenue, 79424. Of course, yeah. I appreciate you guys. I feel like I've been here a lot the past month. For this one, we've managed this property. I've been through several sales of this one, and it's never come up. My client has done what the city has asked as far as this property goes. She's not looking to do anything else with it besides rent the property out. We've removed the tenants that have lived in the units after it was cited that it wasn't able to be used as a triplex. She had purchased it with the intention of renting it out as a triplex. And the two sales prior to that, I represented a buyer on one, I think, and I know somebody in my office had represented the seller's side, and it never came up until recently. There was a leak in one of the gas lines, and Atmos contacted the city about the leak, and the city required her to put separate gas meters at each unit. And so she paid Atmos $5,000 in order to do this, and then the city said, hey, you actually can't rent this as a triplex. So she paid money, and then she got denied the ability to rent to these tenants. And then, so we removed everybody, so there's nobody in there currently. But she's just looking to use it as it's been used. She's not looking to tear it down and do anything else extra to it. So I'm just here on her behalf, because she actually doesn't live in Lubbock, she's in Dallas, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.1, you may approach. All right, I will now close the public hearing as to Agenda Item 6.1. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.1? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Martinez-Garcia, you had some comments?
I did have some comments, but you know what? As I look at the picture of this, we have a lot of structures like this that are grandfathered, and I think we do need to bring them up to the requirements necessary to make them livable. Just from looking at the picture, it is a clean property. It looks well-maintained, and for that, I think I will support moving through with this.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McBrayer?
Kind of like Ms. Martinez-Garcia, that looks like they're in good condition, and the reliance of the woman, you know, to spend the $5,000 to bring it up to code affects me somewhat, too. Normally, I would think this is not what we would like, but that's something definitely to be considered there.
Ms. Joy?
Just a couple of, I think, maybe, one may be a question, one a comment. It looks like there is a carport that I doubt seriously was permitted, and that happens a lot in this city. The other thing I had or question is for Kristen at A1. You know, she lives in Dallas, and she decides to demolish. What can we see on this piece of property?
The A1 district does allow two-story apartment units in addition to duplexes, single-family homes, garden homes, and townhomes. So any one of those.
Potential for a two-story there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
All right, Mayor, I do have one more request, and that is, there is a basement on this property. Can we make sure that that gets registered? I doubt that, is it registered already?
I don't know, but we can check on it and make sure it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion on 6.1? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of Agenda Item 6.1, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? Motion carries 6 to 1. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.2. Ms. Sager?
Item 6.2 is a zone change from R2 specific use for reduced setbacks to general retail district C3. This property is located south of 66, west of Milwaukee Avenue. Here's the response map. We did receive two responses in favor. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. There are commercial uses to the east along Milwaukee Avenue, as well as to the north and south. This is really more of a cleanup zone case. As you can see, this is a leftover piece of R2 in the middle of a C3. Feature land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Here is a plat submitted by the applicant. The future land use map designation of commercial is appropriate with the requested C3 zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. This location is along a local street. Staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, any questions of Ms. Sager on 6.2? All right, Ms. Sager, if you'll move to 6.3?
Item 6.3 is a zone change from R1 specific use to local retail district C2. We sent out seven notifications, receiving one in favor. This property is located east of Milwaukee Avenue, north of 107th. Here is the response map showing the one in favor. The aerial view, it is surrounded by vacant land with some homes to the east. The proposed zoning is adjacent to existing C2 zoning, so this will just extend that zoning a little further north. Feature land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. Photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation of low-density residential is not consistent with the request to C2, but it is appropriate in its location adjacent to existing C2. It is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Milwaukee Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
All right, any questions on 6.3 from Ms. Sager? Let's go ahead to 6.4, and we may have a couple of questions on this one, but let's go ahead.
Item 6.4 is a zone change from single-family district R1 to light manufacturing M1. We sent out eight notifications, receiving four in favor and none in opposition. This property is located near 19th and Inlar. Here's the response map showing the responses received in favor. Aerial view of the subject property is mostly surrounded by vacant land with a couple of residences to the east. The existing zoning, the subject property is adjacent to existing M1 zoning. That zoning was approved by council in 2021 in anticipation of a Jivos being constructed. This property is still owned by Jivos, and they need a little more room to expand. Future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. Plat submitted by the applicant. Even though the future land use map designates this area for residential low-density, the property is located along a thoroughfare and adjacent to existing M1 zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. 19th Street is designated as a principal arterial. Staff recommended approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
All right, any questions of Ms. Sager on 6.4? All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. Without objection, counsel, I will go ahead and have one public hearing for 6.2, 3, and 4. At this time, I will now open the public hearings for Agenda Items 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to any of these three agenda items, you may approach the microphone now. All right, seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Items 6.2, 6.3, or 6.4? All right, I will now close the public hearings as to 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any discussion on 6.2? Any questions of Ms. Sager? All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.2, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? 6.2 carries 7-0. Would next entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any further discussion on Agenda Item 6.3? All right, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? 6.3 carries 7-0. We will next move to Agenda Item 6.4. Entertain a motion to approve 6.4. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Any further discussion or questions on 6.4? Ms. Joy?
Yes. Troubles me again that we have three items on here that no one showed up in support of. I don't know if we're not telling them the right things, or they're being told that, don't worry about it. Don't know what they're being told, but we need to reaffirm that it would be in their best interest to be here, even if it was 7-0 and staff is in support. On 6.4, we did in 2021 approve a change to light manufacturing for Jivos, and it was a little bit further down from the residences. And when you go from an R1 to a light industrial, you always kind of, you know, the lights come on, and you wonder, is that really something we want to do on this piece of property? Because we approved that zone change in 2021, this is just, they need more space, and they have to have the light manufacturing because they have outside storage. If you've ever been to Jivos, and I'm sure a lot of us have, they needed outside storage. They're not manufacturing anything there, but they have to have the storage. It also requires a fence, a screening fence, between that location and the residences. Now, will that be adequate? Don't know. There's nobody here to oppose, nobody for me to talk to about it. But just saying, I think that given what's gone on before, our hands are pretty much tied, but I will be looking for that screening fence to go up and make sure that the neighborhood's not affected.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Anyone else have any further discussion on 6.4? All right, I would also reiterate that I think we've made this request for a year, that even if it's 7-0 at P&amp;Z and staff recommended, there are always questions. I think it's only fair, if council asks questions, that someone that's a proponent for their client would be here to advocate for this to be passed. So I would reemphasize to those specific groups that. Was no one speaking on the public hearing? Who are you with?
Jivos and West Art Commercial. Kevin Watt, West Art Commercial Realty, 5709 79th Street.
There were some questions regarding a screening, a fence screening that.
We have no problem with the screening fence.
Because is that something that's in the works or in the plans?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
No. I think it's always nice when you tell us, okay, here's what we're doing.
Sure.
Why do we need it?
Sure.
Otherwise, we're making assumptions, or you're relying on our staff for our safety, which is not really your job.
Absolutely. I'm sorry I missed that in the public hearing. The only reason we're doing light manufacturing is because that's what Jivos requires. There's no way we're going to put any type of light manufacturing out there whatsoever. And a lot of the support from the neighbors that we got next door is because they like the value of their land going up. So, you know.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
About that. The other part of people showing up is so that we can meet them, because we might not otherwise have that chance. So it gives us an opportunity to put a face with a name.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approval of 6.4, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign? Any opposed by like sign? 6.4 carries 7-0. We will next move to 6.5. I will turn it over to you at this time on 6.5, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Kristin, appreciate it. I was going to ask for the map. Council, this area may be familiar to you. Not that many months ago, we were working on finishing the annexation of the right-of-way for South Quaker leading down to Woodrow Road. You recall, there were some kind of old-timey issues associated with that stretch right there adjacent to, or just immediately north of Woodrow. So the item that you have before you today, those issues have been resolved between the ownership and the county, and everything is good shape. We bring it to you to ask your consideration of step one of what is necessary to now annex that and tie all of our right-of-way together. So specifically, the item in front of you now is the one where we execute the municipal services agreement with the parties and get moving through the process.
All right, any questions of Mr. Atkinson or Ms. Sager while we have them? All right, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Entertain a motion to approve agenda item 6.5?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Ms. Joy. I'm going to ping-pong back and forth today. Thank you, ladies. Any further discussion on 6.5? All right, all in favor of approval of agenda item 6.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? 6.5 carries 7-0. We will next move to 6.6, 6.7. Lee Blue? Oh, there you are. Sorry, I was looking down. And there he is. Go ahead and you'll be discussing 6.6, 6.7, and 6.8, is that correct?
I will be carrying 6.6.
6.6. Wait a minute, you'll be covering 6.6, Blue?
Yes, that's right, Mayor. I will cover if you want me to. Mayor, council, good afternoon. Good to be with you. Item 6.6 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of our 2023 tax note. These are for vehicles that were identified in the budget process as having two factors for us: high useful life and high cost. And those are the only vehicles that we put on a tax note to debt finance. Tax notes work a little bit differently than our typical GOs and COs that we bring forward to you, so I have the team here, RBC Capital, Matt Bowles, our financial advisor, Mr. Jerry Cowes here from Oric, our bond counsel, if you have any questions on the legal side. I'm going to give a quick introduction and then turn it over to Matt. But this serious 2023 tax note is for just over $4.8 million. Tax notes have a statutory maximum of seven years, so that is the longest that we can put these out. This will be for five vehicles. Three of them are E1 pumper's for Lubbock Fire Rescue, one is for a landfill track dozer, and then one landfill compactor. So Mayor, council, the way that these are a little bit different, when we go through GO and CO issuances, we go to the market, allow investors to bid on those. Unlike those in-tax notes, we run this through a competitive bidding process. So our financial advisors with Oric will put our legal documents together, we will send that out, and allow banks to bid on those with their best and final interest rates to be charged to us. So that's kind of the process that we go through on those. Once we get those back, those had to be back to us by yesterday around 1:00 PM, and then we put everything together for the recommendation to bring to you today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all again.
Mr. Bowles?
Mr. Kostalich did a really nice job of teeing that up, and so my presentation will be limited today, but I'm happy to go deep into the weeds if you'd like to. And I know for some of the newer council members, there may need to be a little education around why the city utilizes this process, but it dates well back to the beginning of Mr. Atkinson's tenure here and his desire to have really control over title, lower cost of funding for your vehicles, and as Mr. Kostalich said, for the bigger, more expensive things, instead of doing a program through an institution that's a little more cumbersome from a lease standpoint. So this is pure title that you all hold, and it just makes life easier for you all, and it's a lower cost of borrowing, or at least it has been to date. Speaking of which, I will speak to the market very quickly because that always dictates the cost of borrowing. On page two, I just want to go to the lower left-hand corner here, this is AAA MMD. These obligations are actually issued on your own credit rating, so on the AA spectrum. Although they were issued without a rating, they just, the buyers look to your rating on your other general obligation bonds to price these. And admittedly, that portion of the yield curve from one to seven years is challenged right now. It's higher than it has been on a 15-year average, and it's higher than it was a year ago. And that has everything in the world to do with interest rate policy as dictated by the Fed right now. It also is not helpful that we've had a small banking, I don't even want to call it crisis, but a problem with some of our regional banks across the country, and I think that buying in that portion of the curve has been a little bit challenged. All that to say that you all got interest from several qualified institutions, and we're happy to report that we can award that to one of them. In the past, just so you know, you've gotten somewhere between five and eight bids. This time, you received four, and that's not an indication of anything on your behalf. It just has everything in the world to do with their willingness to put bank capital to work now on the short portion of the yield curve, given what's happened. Here are the bids on this transaction. Webster Bank was the low bidder with a base interest rate of 3.87. I do have a small typo under the call option. I want them to note that that is 215 of 2027, so there's a four-year call on the seven-year obligation. So if at some point in the next four years, or at that point in four years, if rates are lower than they are now, we could refinance that. I do have to say, though, that the amount is so small that it would be really hard to extract any meaningful savings from that, so the likelihood that this ever gets refinanced is pretty low, but we'll continue to watch it for you. And then here are the numbers that are associated with that, and most notably, the debt service schedule on the right-hand portion of the page. And this, again, is part of the tax note portfolio that you all have that manages all of the city's vehicles. Again, going back to the decision to go this route almost five years ago now. So the interest rate in the middle, the all-in TIC includes the cost for issuing the bonds, 4.17%. Again, that has everything in the world to do with where they're issued on the yield curve, but it's very competitive. It would have been higher than this had you chosen to go to the public markets, most notably because the cost of issuance, the rating fees, and all that begin to play a significant factor. So with that, I will conclude my remarks, and I can take questions.
Mr. McBrayer?
So I understand, you know, why you'd want to finance these, or whatever you want to call it, put it on a note, but explain to me the difference then between a tax note and a CO.
And a CO? So a CO is sort of double-barreled. It has the tax back and it has a limited revenue pledge to it. And the, I guess it's no different in terms of this is a non-voted obligation, so it's approved by the council only and looks and acts just like a CO, but that primary...
Main difference.
One main difference.
Okay.
That's it.
I think my question may be more for Blue. Would you give us more, or give me more information on the fiscal impact? When you say the 4.815, we got 2.675 allocated to LFR. The remainder goes to wastewater.
Goes to solid waste, sir.
Solid Waste Department. Help us and go through allocation here. I mean, and what's the fiscal impact after the issuance?
After the issuance, the fiscal impact of this is the departments themselves carry this in their budget. It's a transfer to the general debt service, so where the fund where all of our debt is held, these departments will transfer the money into that to cover the expense, or to cover the cost of this issuance.
So this will be under Chief Ogerson's budget?
It will.
As far as the allocation, that portion?
Yes.
And the other portion will be under waste of solid waste?
Under solid waste. We made this decision a long time ago, or several years ago, about six years ago, to really try to show and be transparent about the full cost of every single department within the city. And so as opposed to carrying this in a separate fund and not showing the full cost of the department itself, we have chosen to combine those, make it full-cost accounting.
Ms. Joy?
Simply put, Lubbock Fire and Rescue and Solid Waste are general fund departments, okay?
They are.
So what you're saying is it will be assessed to them, to the departments, and they will reimburse basically the general fund for the payments that occurred during this seven-year period?
They will, yes.
Okay, okay.
Want to clarify?
Mr. Massengill?
Just to clarify, Mr. Kostalich, that was, that transfer was in the budget we approved already?
It was, as an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Kostalich? Oh, Ms. Brayer?
How close does that come to our estimate?
It comes very close to our estimate. We didn't expect interest rates to be as high, but overall, we had a general sense of where we would be with this issuance.
Okay, so we're not really being excessive, exceeding?
It's not. And I will say too, that the full cost of this principal and interest payments don't start until the next fiscal year. So we put an estimate in our budgets, but the actual payment doesn't hit us for a year.
Okay, thank you. Have I done a motion in a second on that one yet? Okay, entertain a motion on 6.5? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. All in favor of approval of 6.5, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign?
6.6.
6.6. I think I said 6.5. Let me clear it up for the record. We are on 6.6. Ms. Joy has moved to approve 6.6, and Mr. McBrayer has seconded, and the vote carries under 6.67 to zero. There's my one mistake of every meeting. All right, now we'll next move to 6.7 and 6.8. I think those will be collective. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll step through this, take any questions the mayor and the council may have. Item 6.7, of course, is the second reading of the ordinance that creates the reinvestment zone, termed the ExFab Texas Incorporated reinvestment zone within the city of Lubbock. So this is the process that we've been working towards, passage of item 6.7 tonight or today on second read. Now that zone is in place. Related to that, then, will be the action or the consideration of item 6.8, which is now another resolution giving notice of intent. Several meetings ago, you gave notice of intent to consider the reinvestment zone. You wrap that up today if you choose. You now give notice of intent that in the future, you will consider and execute a tax abatement with ExFab Texas. So two items go together, they are separate items. Council, I would like to draw your attention at your place today. You have a single sheet that says notice of intent. This document was in your backup. It is on page 831 of the backup, but there was a typo in your backup. So this one is correct, calls out the correct tax abatement agreement and zone as well as the project. So your action tonight, or this afternoon, second read to establish the reinvestment zone, single reading of an item to give notice of intent that you will consider a tax abatement agreement for ExFab.
All right, any questions of Mr. Atkinson on 6.7 or 6.8? All right, Chad, I think we can take those two together. Is that correct? All right, entertain a motion to approve 6.7 and 6.8? Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Second, Mr. Massengill. All in favor? Any further discussion on 6.7 or 6.8? All right, all in favor of approval of 6.7 and 6.8, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, the second read on 6.7 carries as well as 6.8, 7-0. All right, we will now move to 6.9. I will turn it over to you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nice to be with you this afternoon. Our final item of the day is to talk about a new grant program that Market Lubbock Inc. has asked for you all to consider called the Commercial Revitalization Grant. And so to start, I just wanted to give a brief history of the various types of grants that Market Lubbock currently has in place, and then one that is going away today and will be replaced with this new grant pending your approval. So in November of 2016, Market Lubbock created the first of their reinvestment grant programs, which was for the downtown TIFF area. You've got the downtown TIFF map here that the TIFF boundary is also reflective of the zone in which the downtown grant program can be utilized. There are two types of grants available through this program, one for facade improvements, which roughly speaking is everything that takes place on the outside of a building that doesn't need a permit. And then the permissible grant is for anything that takes place inside or outside of the building that requires a permit from our building safety department. I've included some highlights for you of grants that have been issued throughout this program since its inception. There are also, I believe, 91 active grants right now with Market Lubbock for downtown properties, so it's been heavily utilized. And what's really exciting is you can see on this slide that for every grant dollar that Market Lubbock puts into this program, an average of $22 of private investment is put into this program. So we've seen a tremendous impact throughout the downtown area as a result of this program, and are excited to keep seeing the impacts going forward. In October of 2018, the Market Lubbock Board of Directors decided to expand this program by creating a second program called the East Lubbock Grant Program. And to do this, you all created in November of 2018 what's called the Lubbock East Neighborhood Empowerment Zone. So essentially, for Market Lubbock to be able to have a grant program like this, they have to have a boundary within which those grants can be utilized. And so you can see the boundary of the Lubbock East Neighborhood Empowerment Zone here. Some program highlights for this program are listed on the screen as well. We've given 14 grants, or Market Lubbock's given 14 grants with your approval, on the east side with nine more active projects to date. Before I move on to the next slide, this is the grant program that is going away with your action today and will be replaced by the Commercial Revitalization Grant Program. And so the Lubbock East Neighborhood Empowerment Zone gets brought forward in today's resolution. And so now, instead of an applicant going through the East Lubbock Grant Program, they would go through the Commercial Revitalization Grant Program. Market Lubbock has also decided to extend this program and two new empowerment zones. And so part of your action today creates those two new zones, one on 34th Street and one on North University, and I'll show you maps of those locations here shortly. The terms of the program or requirements of the program are the same. John Osborne is here, and he will correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe there are no additional funds being allocated to this program. It is simply being expanded and accessible to other parts of the city. As you can see, between the three empowerment zones, there's close to 600 properties that would be available to access these grant funds. So it reaches much more of our business owners than it did when it was strictly in downtown or strictly in the east side. And so the Commercial Revitalization Grant Program, your approval today is the final step in this process, and so once we all have your decision today, then Market Lubbock will switch to this new program. And then you can see here the North University Empowerment Zone on the left side of your slide, 34th Street on the right. It's kind of hard to see. These are pretty significant boundaries, and so I apologize for the small scale of the maps. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And like I said, there's a couple of representatives from Market Lubbock here today to answer any questions that you have as well.
Ms. Joy, ask if you'd leave the maps, please?
Sure, the new ones?
Sure. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
First of all, I want to thank John and Jorge. I know Jorge's here also. Thank you all for including North University in the 34th Street area. There's no doubt, I think the public sometimes is naive and not understanding that growth is not just happening southwest. It is also growing in north and east Lubbock, so thank you for doing that, including this area.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. McBrayer?
Yes, so if you can answer this question, I don't know if you can. How much of the money allocated to the downtown TIFF, how much of...
money allocated to the downtown TIFF, how much of that is used or has been used? And also the same for the east Lubbock?
Yeah, so one minor correction for the numbers that Brianna mentioned...
Could let it get away, could you?
Yeah, sorry, is that all total, we've budgeted 1.2, I think it's 1.25 million over the history annually, and when we set up the east side empowerment zone in that area, we took off 250,000, so we had a million downtown and 250,000 on the east side. Now that we've expanded the program again, we still have 1.25 million, but we've reduced down the downtown one down to 750, and we have 500 for the other zones. On an annual basis, remember that sometimes these projects actually take not just months, but sometimes years to actually be redone, and so we vote on an annual basis to, on these projects, we bring those deals before you all for approval as well, and then sometimes it takes them anywhere from six months to two years to actually finish those projects to actually get utilized. So I don't have the total dollar amount that's used necessarily or committed to on an annual basis, but we have a lot more commitments in downtown than we do on the east side on an annual basis, and a lot more activity. It's one reason why we wanted to kind of combine the east side with the 34th Street and North University all together and increase that pool, because we do feel like we're going to have additional requests for grants along those two new corridors. I will say that just in the last roughly couple of months, Jorge has actually started receiving a couple of exciting new projects that are over on the east side that we are really, really excited about, that I think will really help spur some development on the east side. We've been working through some challenges that people just do business a little differently on the east side than they do in downtown, and Councilwoman Patterson Harris has helped us in that area to try to convey what is needed for the grant program with our residents that are business owners and property owners that are over there. So I think we'll see some more things happen as a result of a couple of projects that look like they might come to fruition here soon. But all in all, we have a lot of activity in the downtown area, and at the moment, a little bit less in the east side.
Well, yeah, I want to just commend you for expanding that, that's something I was pushing for, to have expansion on 34th Street, I call that Lubbock Small Business Boulevard, and it really is an important part of my district, but the city as a whole, and I'm happy to see that the money is being allocated, some of that money for downtown to other areas of the city as well, so...
Yes, sir.
My only other question was, how will this program be promoted?
So assuming you all were to vote in favor of that today, we have a letter that's ready to go out to every property owner and business owner along that, along every district that would then let them know that it's available. We have it on our website, obviously, the news, you all make the news quite a bit, and so this, we're hopeful that the news channels will pick up this information as well. But on twice-a-year basis, we send an actual hard copy mail, piece of mail, to every property owner, letting them know that they are eligible if they decide to move forward with any improvements.
So assuming we approve it today, how soon could that?
It's actually ready to go, to be mailed out tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Ms. Martinez-Garcia?
Have a copy of that also, so that I can also help solicit some businesses.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be sure and do that. And then we'll do an update on our website here shortly, that will then have all the parameters and everything, and where those zones are available.
And I'll just add to that, that all of that information is also on the business development webpage for the city of Lubbock as well, so we'll get all of that updated.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let Mr. McBraer know, what we have done is we have ordered some sandwich signs, and we will assign you and Councilwoman Martinez-Garcia to walk up and down 34th Street with those sandwich signs on. But I wanted to say thanks for making that hop over the interstate down 34th Street. There are some great businesses that are on that run, that could really use some funds just to kind of puff it up just a little bit, so I appreciate that, I'm excited, I've already started writing down names.
So, you know, obviously, this is an incentive program, it's meant to encourage people to invest in these properties, to fix them up and all, and as Jorge and I were driving up and down each of these different districts, we both felt pretty passionate that it needed to move all the way over to the area that it did over on the east side, and there's enough commercial area over there that it would have some good merit, and hopefully we'll see some infill construction as well as some renovations.
Yeah, thank you so much, appreciate you.
Mr. McBraer?
I was just going to ask...
One more question?
Well, this is a question, well, it is a question, but I got two questions. I wanted to ask if you wore yours?
I did that before, I've done that, it's your turn.
You've done yours, okay. You still have it, is that the one I'm going to wear? So my only, and I think this runs through three districts, actually, the 34th Street part of it runs through yours, and Ms. Martinez-Garcia's, and mine, so that's great, and it borders yours, right, right on the border, so it's very significant, and just to make the point...
Any comments, Mr. Massengill, Dr. Wilson, I mean, anyone left out here?
Don't feel left out. We have plenty, we have plenty of things going on in this, so...
Thank you, please, you know, plenty of money's being spent in a lot of areas of this city, and it's important that some of these other areas have opportunities to take advantage of development. Just, the important point is, we're not expending more money, we're just readjusting the money that we've already been spending, this is not additional money in that. I know there's been questions that Ms. Ward raised today about this, but the money is there, and it's what we've been spending, and we're just reallocating it to new programs so more people can take advantage of it, and I think that's good.
Yes, sir, we want to put that money to good use, and we're appreciative of the property owners that invest more often than not significantly more dollars than what is required, or what they're, or what then, you know, we max out the grants so often as a result of what the property owners are actually putting into it, and so that's exciting to see, that you have that kind of investment going into these properties.
Thank you, Mr. McBraer. Ms. Joy?
This should make Maurice Stanley happier, but I don't think he'll make me completely happy, but for Maurice, it's a start on 34th Street, which really needs some help.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, entertain a motion to approve 6.9. Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia, second, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of 6.9, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed by like sign? 6.9 carries 7-0. With that, it is 2:56 on May 23rd. Counsel, we'll have three weeks where we will not have a regular council meeting, so we'll see you back June 13th. We're adjourned.